Call the meeting in order.
As required by the. Seventy-five, I've noticed this meeting is provided on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three by. Of noticing expect to find from hunting from Democrat and by posting notice in this building on the same date. Mayor Barson.
Here.
Mr. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Beam.
Here.
Mr. Connect.
Here.
Ms. Matherma. Here. Mr. Lieber.
Here.
And.
I find the lead. The United States of America will be to the Republic of Republicans, one nation under God, in the visible. With the teeth of this girl.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meetings on May eighteenth. Maybe we'll make that motion. I'll make that move. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Anybody have any comments, corrections, deletions? Roll call.
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yeah.
Mr. Bean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the treasurer's report, the June bill list and the interim bill list. They're gonna make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
If anyone has a second. Second. If they have any questions, comments, anything?
This one question on the septic, the nine hundred dollars, was that for all the? A and W septic. Port of body? Is that for all the?
Okay. Anybody else? Roll call.
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Ms. Matherma.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we accept the tax collection, tax and sewer reports for May. Anybody want a second? Anybody have questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barson.
Yeah.
Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes. Yes. Police Department report for May. If you have anything you wanted to say, or is this one a?
I think nothing really important unless anybody has any questions.
If I have any questions on the? Report.
I did want to bring up, we did receive an application for crossing guard. And. I just got the background back today, so I would like to. Move forward with hiring. Teresa Brown. For the. One spot that we need to cross the guard on Dorian, Wyndham, Percy's man, Wyndham and Daniel. Starting in August, we're sold back in session.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, thanks. Anyone want to make a motion to hire?
I'll make the motion.
About a second. Comments on it? Roll call.
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Joe, DPW.
Yeah, just two things I want to highlight. First off, we wrapped up the spring cleanup, the lawn debris and chipping with forty-one cubic yards lawn debris and twenty-seven cubic yards of wood chips. And secondly, the DPW was able to put in our schedule, take care of the commercial property. Two commercial properties on West Avenue and one property down on South Main Street, get them all cut up and trimmed up and stuff. And thirdly, we took delivery on the two DPW trucks, June second. So we're here and I'm getting them into service, we've been using.
Anybody have any questions, comments on the DPW?
No, I signed those POs today, Mike. It was nice.
You know, you mentioned last week about an eighty thousand dollar truck out there, and I was thinking, we didn't get him to do one, yeah, I didn't know what came in. Okay. Township Parks report, Lisa, you have anyone to add, or just your written reports?
My written report, I just had those few items we spoke about earlier.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on the?
Yeah, I have. State Health Benefits Plan. We're trying to figure out if it's this Greenwich Township or the one down, I think in Gloucester County.
Yeah, there's actually three Greenwich Townships. There's just a question on the prescription. Plans, we're sorting that out. I want to make sure it's ours before it counts against us or for us, so.
And how's the rest of that process going with trying to find the alternative?
We had to wait on the prescription history, so now we got it. As soon as I can, you know, confirm that it is correct for us, then that'll be distributed, and I can't say how long it might take them to go to school.
Okay. Anybody else?
And Lisa, just, I know this is a reoccurring one, but the noise complaint from Thomas Doorway. About Alamar and the trucks and stuff like that, I know we've had Mike, and I know Mike, he sent him a letter. Probably two, two and a half months ago. Yeah. And I do know that they went from four fifteen. To four forty-five in my neighborhood. It's still a bit early, as far as I'm concerned. But, I mean, it wouldn't be so bad if. Not only are the trucks loud, just the process of picking up trash. Um, any thoughts on that, or is that it? Because I, well, because I do see coming up later on, we have, we're talking about a noise ordinance, and I believe it's in relationship to this particular problem.
Yeah, I mean, most of them talk about like seven to like ten, or seven to eleven. So if you're thinking, if you're making noise at four forty-five in the morning, that would be violate violation of noise ordinance. And I think we have a noise ordinance where you don't need to get the desk full reader. I think ours is kind of that general one that, you know, it's.
Well, you'll see in your pack, if you got the same packet I do. Um. You're not allowed to make enough noise to cause, that's the terminology, to upset your sleeping process, and so on and so forth. Um, because I know when the Dunkin' Donuts wanted to apply up on Route fifty-seven for the PNC Bank, they said they'd be getting deliveries at four AM. And that was one of the real killers. Besides the traffic inflow.
Yeah, this looks to me, it was funny. These type of ordinances, just like this one, were never enforceable because they said it's too subjective. You know, it's the noise that bothers a certain person, and then there was an appellate division case that said, if you put this, because I. I could see it's yelling, shouting, radios, televisions, phonograph. If you use this language, the courts will uphold it. So, because you always had these problems where somebody's dogs barking continuously, so what's continuous? Then they would tape it, and then it was like, well, the dog stopped barking for ten seconds, so is that really? But this is the best ordinance you could have for noise, and you can write these up as a nuisance, so if somebody, if it annoys you, that's really the standard. So, under this ordinance, so, and they'll enforce it, because we had somebody in another town, I didn't represent, but I was an official, and. This went up to the appellate division, and they upheld it, so.
So with that being said. Another letter to Alamar? With all that information and?
We could attach a copy of the noise ordinance.
Right. Complaints about that? Pardon? You can't complain about?
Uh. Yes and no, I mean, like I said.
They started a little bit later after.
Well, they did, but again.
Now, they're four fifteen or four forty-five.
Earlier again, nobody. Yeah, no, it came after Mike's thing, but, but I don't understand why, and if they want to do it four forty-five in the morning, why they're not doing Route fifty-seven? And doing Route fifty-seven at two o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, what a mess. Yeah, that's, you know, do that run, but.
Okay.
But, and they were in case center at four forty-five this past Monday. Hopefully not. Yeah, because I think they were in my neighborhood, probably closer to four thirty, a little bit earlier than.
And I could write a letter in a nice way saying, we appreciate you that you've made an effort, however, we would appreciate it if you complied with our noise ordinance, which says, you know, after seven.
Any else on the clerk's report? Zoning and Code Enforcement Report, anybody have any questions or comments on that? Paul, you have anything?
No, no. No, I don't.
It's like, I like what it's like to give that report every month.
No, it is nice getting that, yes.
Court report, any questions or comments on it? Paul, you have anything you want to say about that?
Uh, no, I looked it over, it's, looks like it's usual.
Yeah. And ACL report, if I have any questions or comments on that. Five calls.
We got five in a month.
Yeah. People are out and about now. Okay, so nothing on that, right? Okay, so looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda of the police department, DPW Township Park, zoning, zone enforcement, court report, and the ACL report. You gonna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
If anyone has a second?
I'll second.
Any more questions or comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yeah.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Ms. Matherma. Yeah.
Committee reports, Lily, you have any?
Okay, so the historic society has some concerns about the bench that was broken back here. Since they purchased the first one. And this one was broken beyond repair. They thought maybe. Open space or the township could absorb replacing it. Since there was nothing that was caught on video to show who broke it. I didn't know on what we wanted to do about that, if we wanted to discuss, well.
I guess. Somebody, when they do something, is that a gift to the town, Mike? Does that become our property, I guess, or do they maintain ownership, I mean, despite here, but?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
And they might have a valid point that.
Well, I.
They gifted it.
Yeah, I think they give it to us. It's a gift.
Yeah. Yeah. Who, which officials, who give it, do you know?
Yeah.
The story. No, they gifted it to the town, so I guess it does become our responsibility to maintain it.
I did reach out to the insurance, and we have a thousand dollar.
Yeah, I figured, I knew that, I knew we were gonna beat it.
They wanted us to call them, so I did, but.
Yeah, what, was it like two hundred and fifty dollars to fix it or something like that? Two forty, so.
No. I guess. Joe, we just bought it.
Considered if that comes.
Comes to that.
Oh, speaking of, speaking of. Or no one, yes.
I guess, you know.
Yeah.
Joe bought it, put it on the, which account we're gonna take it on, I guess is the question.
Could I make a motion to do that, or did you just do that? Or replace the bench?
Well, I, I guess.
Yeah, there's no problem. Replacing that out of buildings and grounds.
No, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
We don't have to do.
We don't have to do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. You done then, Ellen?
I'm done then, yeah.
So?
Yes.
Let's see, school. We had another resignation on the school board. Yeah. Help me, Brian.
Kevin or?
Kevin Bean.
Yeah, Kevin.
He spent twelve years on the Peabody School. School District Board, and he had enough there, and then he surprised us last Wednesday. When he's, or last month, when he said he was resigning from our board as well, so. We have that opening. Another board member that was elected last year, I heard, has her house, either she's old or it's on the verge of getting sold, so that's gonna be another resignation. There might be a possible third one. That is moving out of the township, so. If you know anybody that is interested in, uh, Google it. Now, reach out to the school district. So Vicki Little, who has been here faithfully for years, representing the township, is now gonna be the school board rep, the Febr, which I think is gonna be a great. Great spot for her. Though tonight Beth was supposed to show up, school board president, she goes, oh, I'll come out here, I'm meeting on Wednesday night, so, you know.
On Wednesday night?
Thursday.
Did you say? No wonder she's not here. Her me is Wednesday, aren't this Thursday? She did everything.
So that, that's about it. They, oh, uh, six out of the top ten students this year out of Peabody are working really.
Okay.
So. We always represent that segment of the top ten very well. So. That's about it.
All right, thanks.
Brian. For recreation, we have the camp that's gonna be running the twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth, maybe the thirtieth, depending on raining. Um, we're up to almost fifty, fifty kids. That's a good number. Joe, um, can we get one already set up and delivered Friday before? Thank you.
Good.
And the, uh, the, uh.
One way.
It got fundraised through the Gators?
Yeah.
The booster club? Nice. Maybe next year we can work on that a little earlier versus. You know, the time, so it didn't.
Yeah.
It all, but that's nice, okay.
Brian, the fifty from our town, or is that open to other towns too?
Mostly our town. I get, I get all the listings. There might be like five or six kids from Opa, it's all, it's all our town.
At what time?
It's nine thirty to one o'clock. On Monday through Thursday.
Okay. Okay. Then Paul?
Okay, um, squad related business. Over the last few weeks, we've been talking, and as you all know, we're going through the process of trying to become licensed. So that we can have paid staff, which will also have a billing aspect to the rescue squad, but we've been trying to work with the volunteers to keep it a little bit of a hybrid. Um, but I know that I had mentioned that I thought as the squad became licensed. And or a hybrid unit, that we might be able to wean ourselves off of some tax dollars. Well, I've come to find out that that's, that's, that's just not true. Um. And, and we're, we're going, we're running the rescue squad right now on about ninety thousand dollars a year. It's about to go to three hundred thousand. So there's really no way to wean ourselves off of what tax dollar we're getting. And between billing and probably extra fundraising. Is how we're gonna have to try to come up with that, that deficit. Don't necessarily know all the billing numbers yet. Fortunately, insurance probably locally is probably gonna be our biggest asset, but we won't know until the time comes, which then brings me to my second part. On July fifteenth, Saturday morning, between nine and one, the rescue squad will be having a fun drive in the center of town. Uh, we've never tried that before, you know, Black Fridays, we've always been up at the Lowe's, entrance and things like that nature, but I think you're gonna find little pop-up. Fun drives like that throughout the community, uh, over the course of the next year, while we try to. Figure out and maintain how to pay staff.
Have you, uh, have you called ShopRite? About just coin drives there?
Yeah, we have done them in the past with, in ShopRite. Um, I know that our fire department does it there, lots of other people kind of do it there. It's kind of an overworked area, we don't necessarily want to get lumped into that. ShopRite already does enough for us.
Yeah.
Without us doing that, and if we're out on Lowe's on Black Friday and things of that nature, well, like I said, we haven't decided all the locations. We're actually talking about doing an old fashioned sheet with a bullseye. But, you know, the biggest comment that I get from that whenever we talk about that is, you know, that's great for the coins, but then dollar bills don't block fast. You know, and there's more in green than there is in silver. So, but anyway, so that's kind of the, the status of the squad right now. Um, we're probably. Better than the third of the way through our process and getting ready to get licensed. Um, but we still have a bit to go.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, thanks. Mike for that one. Excellent point.
Good evening, everyone. Um, all right. I don't know if everybody saw, but we put together a memo regarding the new stormwater regs and so forth, and what we have to do, this is that. T R A responsibility and. James, did we get the fifteen dollar to ten thousand? Did that come in? The first chunk of the grant?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, it'll be, it'll be coming in. It was the twenty-five thousand dollar grant that everybody got. I would recommend. At your leisure, taking a look at the memo, because it's pretty, Joe, did you pick? Did you, how about it? It's pretty overwhelming and pretty. Overwhelming is maybe the best word to use, so. Nothing has to be done quite immediately, but there's a lot of work, both from their side of things and our side of things, to comply. So, and we're gonna send out another memo regarding what we anticipate from budget perspective for. For our work, so that's something that I don't think anybody's gonna really enjoy as we proceed forward. Okay. Baby's Road. We are just ready to get started, and we've been holding off, obviously, until the adoption of the agenda, that's the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three DOT grants. So I, I know the resolution, or the budget's on the agenda for later, so we'll take care of that. The twenty twenty-four applications for DOT grant are in later, listed later on the agenda, so Lisa did a good job getting those put on. Plenty early enough. The applications are due to be submitted before July first, and then we will be. And we will make that deadline and get those in, so we've been on a good run, hopefully we'll get, we get another one this year. And then the, the last two things are the sewer operation and maintenance and the rebound wall, which I see her later on the agenda, so you just want to deal with them then? Want to get to them?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Well, that's, that's all I got. Unless anybody has any. Thanks, Mike.
Question.
So Mike, on this report that you said, I wrote cost with a question mark. It sounds like that twenty-five thousand is not gonna be enough to cover what's. Need for page?
Well.
List of requirements.
Obviously, the work that the DPW has to do. That's part of, I guess, their operating budget, I, I don't know. Clearly, the, the mapping work and the, that part of it, which is, we would need to do, clearly is. Not part of your annual budget, it's a special tasks. So, uh, oh, so you look, isn't it, it's pretty unbelievable, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's, you know, the state of New Jersey, between the flood, the flood plain ordinances. And the stormwater ordinances, so over the course of the last year and the updates, is obviously making a very concerted effort to protect. The groundwater, the waters of the state. Now, clearly, I don't think anybody would ever argue with that philosophically, but it's costing. It's, it's gonna cost everybody a, a little bit of change, there's just no getting around it. So. Yeah, I was pretty, when Gene, Gene went and put that memo together for us, and he's really good with that stuff, and first, when I read it, the first, I was like. And we sat down, like, are you kidding me? Like, and he's like, no, I'm not kidding you, so. We'll keep you updated as things go along, we're not really doing anything other than kind of setting the table, I know, we're obviously coordinating with DPW and so forth, so.
I like the one where it says you have to remove excess de-icing materials on township roads within seventy-two hours. Do we have equipment, Joe, to do that?
No, but I think with excessive. Right, we got overdumping just stuff and keeps, yeah.
That'll be a shame.
Well, yeah, there's a handful of them here, but Joe and I have actually talked about this one, and believe it or not, the new equipment that we've recently purchased. Uh, we have to, by January one of twenty twenty-three, so it's kind of already, the handling, storage and disposal of wood waste and yard trimmings. You know, we bought a truck with a roll-off. That can be stationed here. And we're even talking about maybe buying an extra container or two, so that, that'll act as our storage and waste facility, so we get it down to compost facility. But with that being said, Mike, I'm gonna ask you this with all these new rules, is the state gonna be a little bit friendlier to us? Composting and leaf storage on our own property, which they don't really allow now?
I mean. I, I don't know, Paul, I wish you could answer that question, and that's, I don't. I, I know where you're going with this, of course, they certainly should, shouldn't they?
Well, they, sure. You're gonna mandate us to, to take care of it, but, oh, but you're not allowed to store it on your property. I mean, because we, we probably have space out of the way that we could.
Well.
Do this on our own.
Yep. We could find it. And out of the waste pile.
Right. So, okay, that's it.
Ready, Mike?
I'm all, all, thank you.
Okay, Mike, not for that.
Yeah. Yeah, he does that all by.
Old business, anybody have anything to bring up on that old business? Any new business anybody have? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adopt Resolution forty-six twenty-three, who's the refund of Thomas Grove Park rental fee. Resolution forty-seven twenty-three refunds of over fees. Resolution forty-two twenty-three, the approvals of twenty twenty-three legal license, we know. And you wanna make a motion to adopt this?
I'll make it.
Any questions, comments, or discussion on? Roll call, Lisa.
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Ms. Matherma. Yes.
Okay, looking for a motion to open public hearing on ordinance number one oh five twenty twenty-three, it's a coal ordinance, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All favor.
Aye.
To open up the public hearing on that red, uh, ordinance. Andrew, can you give us a brief description of what that ordinance is?
Brief explanation of what that is, yes, so what that basically is, it's an ordinance that allows for us to bank the unused amount of, of cap that we didn't use in the current year's budget. And carry it forward, that doesn't mean that we have to use it, um, it just allows us the ability that if, when we go forward into the following year. We happen to need that, that cap for a year, we can use it.
Anybody from the audience wishing to come up and have a question on or comment on that? Thing, I'm not making a motion, we close public. Hearing on it. I'm gonna second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to adopt resolu, uh, ordinance one oh five twenty twenty-three, which is the coal ordinance, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
If you want a second?
Second.
Leave further questions, comments, discussion on it? Roll call, Lisa?
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Yes.
Looking for a motion to open the public hearing on. Wait, I have to do an ordinance sort of like it, right?
You know, it's funny, it's the one resolution, they call it a resolution, but it's really an ordinance, right, open to the hearing.
I'm looking for a motion to open up public hearing on the annual budget, anybody wants? If you want a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up, make any comments, have any questions about the, uh, pending budget? You want to give us any, uh, information on it?
Yeah, I'll give you a quick breakdown. Um, so the, the, the current year's budget that we're adopting tonight, um, we're in compliance with both the tax levy and the appropriation caps once again this year. Um, we used two hundred and fifty dollars of that cap act that we were discussing a moment ago in the last ordinance. Um, this year, so we barely touch it, this is the, is the. Is, is the point of that. Uh, the total increase in the local tax levy was five point six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Uh, and this year, the average home in Greenwich is assessed at about two hundred and seventy-two thousand, so the overall tax impact to your average home in Greenwich is a hundred and fifty-three dollars annually, or about thirteen dollars a month. Um, a tax point this year was fifty-nine thousand three hundred dollars. Um, we did increase the open space levy by one cent. Um, that effect is three dollars annually, or some amount of change every, uh, every month, the average, uh, taxpayer. That's basically, unless you want me to discuss anything further.
Anybody wish to make any comments, any questions on the budgets? See, none, I'll make a motion, we close the, uh, public hearing on it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to adopt Resolution forty-nine twenty-three, the twenty twenty-three budget for the township, anybody want to make that motion? I know everyone's reluctant to make that.
I'll make that motion.
If anyone has a second? I'll second it. Hey, you have, buddy, have any further questions, anybody want to make any comments about it?
Well, the only comment I'm gonna make, and, and, you know, obviously, there's not a lot of people that are gonna hear this, maybe over the media, video and stuff like that. Feel free to come down and look at the budget, show us where you think there's some fat, it's just not there. I mean, it is as lean as it has been in forever, which, to be perfectly honest, it's a little too lean, because it's only gonna come back and buy this again next year. So. That's my.
I hear you, I, I, I think anybody goes down, looks, I realize we have a, a revenue problem, not so much spending problem, so. If anybody have any further comments or questions? Roll call, Lisa.
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mr. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Ms. Matherma. Yes.
Looking for a motion to adopt Resolution fifty twenty-three as a governing body certification of the annual audit, anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second. I'll make it. I'll second. Andrew, you wanna give us anything on that?
Sure do. So, the results of operations for two thousand and twenty-two, um, I'm just gonna go through a couple of highlights for the year. And if anyone has any questions, uh, you can go ahead and address them at the end. Um, so we had total revenues in two thousand twenty-two of twenty-two million six hundred thousand. We had total expenditures of twenty-two million forty-four thousand. We utilized six hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the current fund, fund balance increased from seven hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, by twenty-six thousand and totaled seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand as of twelve thirty-one twenty-two. Our tax collection rate, once again, was really high this year, ninety-eight point five two percent, which is excellent. Um, basically, anything above like ninety-six, ninety-seven percent is really good. Um, so again, we're maintaining that high level of collection, which is, is one of the things that does help us actually when, when we get to budget time. Is that we can anticipate a higher amount. Um, as far as debt is concerned for the town, uh, we continue to aggressively pay down the debt. We paid three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of bond anticipation notes off in two thousand twenty-two. And we also paid down eighty thousand dollars of bonds. Now, we know that we issued a new bond for, uh, seven million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, for various improvements, road improvements, and also the construction of the new municipal complex. Um, so the, the two bonds that are currently still outstanding, uh, the one was issued in two thousand and eleven. Which will finally mature in two thousand twenty-nine, and the new issue that was issued last year will finally mature in two thousand and forty-nine. It's way off, right? It's crazy number to look at. I wrote that down earlier. I'm like, wow, that's so far away. Um, the, the sewer utility fund, uh, had, had revenues of one million three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-two. Expenditures told about eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. We used two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of fund balance. Uh, in the, in the sewer utility, so the total sewer operating fund balance increased from one million and thirteen thousand in two thousand twenty-one. By approximately two hundred thousand dollars and totaled one million two hundred and seventeen thousand as of twelve thirty-one two thousand twenty-two. Um, the audit comments and recommendations, we had seven findings in two thousand and twenty-two. That we felt needed to be recommendations in the report. Um, when you look at the Facebook here, it's the very last page. Um, and, and in the pages preceding that, you can see a little bit more detail on the specific findings and other information related to the recommendations. Um, out of the seven findings, there were three that were repeats. Um, the one is segregation of duties, which I know we've talked about for as long as I've been here. It's, it's a budgetary constraint, um, in order to remove that recommendation, it's a lot of work, it's very complicated, and. We just don't have the ability budgetarily to, uh, to, to staff in such a way. The second recommendation was, uh, purchase orders being prepared and approved prior to the purchase of goods and services. Um, this is basically ensuring that there's availability of funds. I know that Shannon's been working on that, and, uh, we're anticipating that in two thousand twenty-three. This hopefully won't be a repeat recommendation. Um, the third one is that, uh, there were a lot of inter-fund balances at the end of the year that weren't clear. Again, I know that that's something that we've been working with Shannon on to try to help and clear a lot of that out. Um, some of it was things that were inherited, that we've been kind of chipping away at over the last few years. Um, but I think we're down to a point where hopefully in two thousand twenty-three, by the end of the year, we'll have that cleared out, and we won't see this recommendation again either. Um, the, the bank accounts being reconciled on a monthly basis was the fourth recommendation. Um, there were, there were a number of accounts that, uh, we had to, had to wait on to get the reconciliations done. But I've talked to Shannon, we're currently up to date on all of our reconciliation, so again. Shouldn't be there next year, hopefully, as long as we stay the, the, the straight and narrow here. Um, we also had a couple of over expenditures. Um, it wasn't a lot, it was, it was like eighty-four hundred dollars. Um, but Shannon's monitoring more closely all of the budget lines this year, so we're gonna ensure that that's not an issue. And, uh, we're gonna touch base products at the end of the year to make sure that there's no transfers that need to be made in November or December towards the end of the year. To make sure that that doesn't show up again next year either. Um, there, we, there was no analysis of the payroll agency account balance. Basically, what that is, is that your payroll agency account. Is, uh, it's, it's, it's essentially a zero balance account, where every dollar that goes into there should be going to somewhere. So, we didn't have a full analysis of the balance. Again, that was something that was kind of inherited. And I think that there's a couple of, uh, items in there that we're ready to like pull the trigger on and wipe out and actually get that into a good spot as of the end of twenty-three. So again, we'll be working with Shannon to make sure that that's not repeated again next year. Um, and then the last item was, uh, there was a slight deviation in the retro pay calculations. It wasn't anything of material amounts. Um, there were small nominal amounts. Um, and we've gone over the calculation now with Shannon, and she's got a, a grasp on that, and I believe. She said that as of the next retro pay after the adoption of the budget this evening. Um, everything should be squared away as far as that goes, so everyone will be made whole. And that is the two thousand and twenty-two audit.
Okay, roll call, Lisa, on the fifty point three.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yeah. I'm making a motion to adopt fifty-one twenty-three, the corrective action plan, anybody want a second?
I second.
Andrew already went over that already for this first explanation, so anybody have any questions or comments on that? Roll call?
Mayor Barsting?
Yeah.
Mister Baylor?
Yeah.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes. Way to do any of this group activity, or what?
I'm gonna pass it along if you guys.
Ordinance one oh two twenty twenty-three, are you ready to discuss that or take action, or we need to say that's the last thing to correct it us? AP on the executive, the top that. If I need to go an executive for any longer? No? No, you're fine. Looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one oh two, twelve twenty-three for the Comcast municipal, uh, consent. For their services here, anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second? I'll second. Anybody have any questions, comments, discussions on it? Roll call?
Mayor Barsting?
Yeah.
Mister Baylor?
I'm standing.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Oh, you're not at all.
You too, Andrew.
Right, Andrew?
For a motion to open up public hearing on ordinance number one oh four twenty twenty-three, the ordinance amending the open space membership, uh, number. Anybody wanna make that motion? Everybody have a second?
Second.
Anybody want, wish to come up, make any comments, ask any questions regarding that ordinance? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close public hearing, second, all favor?
Aye.
Did anybody do the all the favor, favor it open? Okay. Looking for a motion to adopt resolution fifty-two twenty-three and fifty-three twenty-three. Fifty-two twenty-three is the approval to submit a grant application for loose hollow road, fifty-three twenty-three is approval to submit a grant application for well growth. Anybody wanna make that?
Uh, I'm sorry, enough too bad, I think we need a motion to adopt the one oh four first, sorry.
I'll do like, do, okay. Looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number one oh four twenty twenty-three, anybody wanna say?
I'll make that one.
I'll second.
Okay, names, further questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yeah.
Mister Kenneth?
Yeah.
Mister McDermott?
Anybody wanna make the motion for fifty-two twenty-three, fifty-three twenty-three, we did that too, right?
I'll make that one.
Roll call on this?
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yeah.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
Yeah.
Mister McDermott? Yes.
Mike, just one question on that. Mike, what part of water growth getting paid?
Yes, it's actually not a very big section. It's basically from, uh, well, where Harlem cuts off.
Right.
From that intersection down to the Franklin-Greymwich boundary line. Frank, that's the only section now in that area that really hasn't been repaved since the water main war.
Okay.
Was done. So, uh, and, and Franklin's actually got an application meant to do the, the, their section, so.
Joe, you have any information on the amendment for this twenty-nine, two thousand nine oh nine?
I've, I've forwarded, uh, what, what needs to be increased and stuff.
So we, we looked at this, uh, last month in the packets, and I've been working with, um, somebody in Mike's office. We were trying to find in the code where the original ordinance was, so, um. What I found was a draft ordinance from a long time ago that seems to have never actually been codified into the code. So, we're, we're looking at, um, it looks like it was highlighted that they were gonna add a section into our code. So I think that's where we're gonna put it now, right? So we'll have an ordinance, uh, for next month.
Okay.
But basically, all those fees are exactly what Joe outlined last month.
Oh, now we got to Mike Finelli's favorite topic, the waste order, uh, operation and maintenance collection system.
Uh, I, I find the rebound wall much more appealing than that, but that's one of the times, okay. Uh. We, and when I say we, relative to the sewer O and M contract, that's, uh, Brent Carney, Dan Madden, myself. And, and Lisa. Um, the contract with Chapman, our current operator, it was gonna expire, we needed to, uh, obviously, put another one out the bid. Well, we did. And. Unfortunately, there was a, uh, a little problem that was brought to my attention from Brent. Something about how the, uh, how they submitted the spec. Not using their correct corporate name, Michael probably appreciate this. And the name that they put on the spec isn't a registered business in the state of New Jersey. So Brent. Is pretty thorough with that stuff, so he basically said, we can't award the contract. Uh, I tried to get him, uh, between yesterday and today to, to see, you know, was it just as easy as? Going now rebidding it for next month kind of thing. Uh, unfortunately, I don't, I didn't get a hold of him. But based upon, and I can read, I can find my email and read it to you if you, if you're so interested, uh, his email. Lisa, did he copy you on that? He didn't?
No.
Do you want, want me to read it? Just.
Yeah, well.
All right, I'll do a search here for a second, then I'll, then I'll let you.
Well, you seem like you wanna read it, yeah.
Well, no, I just wanted to know that, that why, this is kind of a little peculiar thing. I mean, we only got one bid.
Yeah.
And the price skipped one up a little bit, but not bad, and Chapman's been good, and I think, you know, it was, it was a. Clearly, just a technicality, you wanna call it that? Um, no. So, my recommendation, under all these circumstances, would be to, um. Do not award the contract tonight to Chapman, authorize. Us to go out the bid again, um, and luckily, with the new arrangement with the papers. It's not that expensive to go out the bid again like it used to be, okay? All right, let me read it.
And who's this from, Brent Carney?
This is from Brent Carney. Okay. Chapman Inc. is a legal entity registered with New Jersey and holds the business registration certificate, public, public work certificate. Any contract would have to be with that legal entity. Maybe they will tell you that it's, that it is Chapman Inc., DBA, Chapman Environmental Services. But we need formation documents for Chapman Environmental Services in order to further evaluate the bid and award the contract. That's the comment. Um, Lisa, I'll zip that to you, so you have it, um. So, again, unfortunately, I wasn't able to get Brent to get a little more depth.
It's not the easiest thing to do is, why don't we just make a motion to go out for a bit again?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Anybody wanna make a motion to go out for a bit? The, uh, for contact, maybe it's contact.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Lisa?
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yeah.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
Yeah.
Mister McDermott?
Yeah, all you have on that, Mike?
Yeah, that's all I have on that. We'll, we'll get it out, hopefully, we'll have better news for next month. And, and I think there's, let, let me, uh, say this as well. Should there be the need to extend the contract with Chapman? You know exactly when their existing contract ends, isn't it?
Two thirty?
It's close, it's somewhere around here, that, that we obviously, that the, the committee, uh. Agrees to, uh, extend their contract through the end of July.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Okay.
I think that's the last one we're gonna do.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, Chapman has been around for a long time, and, and they're, they were the only bidder, I'm sure they'll bid again. This was a little legal snafu that came up and whatnot, so.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, what are you gonna do? Like, you're not gonna get anybody else to come in for a month, and we have to get it in.
Yeah, all right, I mean, so, so.
You don't have any choice, but.
I just wanted to, in case they would bring it up, I can tell them, I said, well, no, no, we, there was, maybe you wanna just make a quick motion. Um, to extend their contract for whatever is needed to, to get through July.
I'll make a motion that we extend the contract to accept the captain for, uh, until we negotiate a new contract. I'll go second.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, Lisa?
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
Yes.
Mister McDermott? Yes.
Rebound wall. Uh, much more interesting and better news, I would say, than the sewer. Uh. Did you, everybody see the bid summaries? Okay. Pretty interesting, four bids. And this was, okay, this was put out in the form of a quote. With the hope that we would be under the bid threshold, and we could use the school's piece, uh, QPA. To award the contract. Now, that bid threshold becomes forty thousand dollars. Yeah. Well, I mean, if the four bidders, uh, wait to, for the low one, I'll get to last. There were three, three items in the bid, the wall itself, and then the turf on the boat, on one side, and then on both sides. Which were alternate bids, though they didn't have to be awarded necessarily. Um. The lowest bid of the other three bidders was seventy-five thousand two fifty-six. The second lowest bid was one hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred. And the highest bid was one hundred and twenty-three thousand eighty, clearly all well in excess of the forty thousand. And then thankfully, there was a fourth bid, which came in, and they did not bid the turf. Mind you, so they, this is just for the wall. Twenty-one thousand sixty-four dollars. So. A very reasonable number, a number lower than we had even estimated, um. So, this is what I, and I, um. I talked to Jeremy Blunt very briefly, um, and, and the way we can do this is as follows. Award the contract to Alcoa, and there's gonna be a couple of conditions we'll, we'll get to. For the wall. We don't have to take any action on the turf. Well, after the wall's built, we'll evaluate the turf, and Brian's probably best served to discuss this. And then if we need, if we need turf, then we'll deal with putting in turf at that point. There, it's gonna have to be done, it has nothing to do with, with the wall. Right, might sound fair, I mean.
Yeah, Joe, what, what do you think? I mean, with, with frost, you're gonna be bouncing, you know, the ball, and do, do you think we'll be able to keep the grass?
Oh, keep it from becoming a, a dirt, a dirt mud hole, yeah, I'll be tough.
Yeah.
I'm ba-, I'm battling that right now.
Yeah, I know.
It's out there.
Yeah. No, I think in time, it's, there's no way it's gonna last.
No, you'll have.
It'd be great.
You'll eventually have.
Yeah. But we could still proceed with the wall, and the turf is obviously would be secondary. Now, there, uh, there were a couple of documents that we were waiting for from Alcoa. That they did not submit, or that, uh, that being the public, um, work certification and the business registration certificate. That was supposed to arrive, and again, this was a quote, this wasn't a bid spec, so the, the requirements for the documentation are. Not quite as specific. Um. So. The, my recommendation would be. For the township committee to award the contract for the concrete wall only. Con-, the concrete rebound wall for Thomas Stewart Park. To Alcoa Concrete, an amount of twenty-one thousand sixty-four dollars. No action on either of the alternate bid items. Conditional upon Alcoa submitting the Public Works and Business Registration Certificate. Um, to our office and for attorney labor's review. Mike, you okay with that? Everybody, everybody follow me and knows where we're at, and everybody good?
You spoke to Jeremy?
Jeremy was completely fine with doing it that way, yeah, he was like, he's like, hey. Cause in the committee's lap, I'm fine with it, that's, that'll work, yeah, no, good, you know, so.
I guess this would be a phase type deal, right? Add, add turf later on.
Yeah, I mean, two things are, even though they're in the same general vicinity, the, the one really has nothing to do with the other, so.
Mike, how, you got twenty-one thousand and change, you got one at eighty-four, one at, one at seventy-seven, and one at forty-three. Why is it such a big difference? I mean, the specs, you gave.
Well, the, the specs are the same, it's. Um. I, I, there's two, two reasons, Bill, and whether one of these is right, or they're both right, or they're both wrong, I don't know. Um, contract, a lot of contractors are all pretty busy, and a lot of contractors, they. They escalate their quotes because they take the attitude, you know what? It, we're, we're busy, and we really don't have time for this job, but if we can get it for X dollars, we'll go, we'll take it. And then, um, and the other, the other, and I'm not sure where some of these guys are, are from. There, there's a, there's a, a distance issue. Uh, and again, I think a lot of it goes back to, let's throw a number out there, you know, no pun intended, but you throw it at the wall and you see what sticks. And, uh, and, but the first one, what we opened was the ATAC for eighty-four. I, I was like, you know, I was like palpations like right away. I'm like, oh my God, and then eighty-four thousand dollars. So thankfully we got the one good bid.
So Joe. Isn't there a water problem over there? Isn't there some drainage issues in that area where they want to put that wall up?
There, there's a swell that the water runs from the top of the park there down around. We, we've talked about that and I, where initially we laid out, we moved it further out and stuff. So we shouldn't be, it shouldn't interfere much with the natural swell.
As well with the, the turf? If we eventually put turf in that swell, will it be a problem?
No, because it's still far enough away from the swell. Though, there'll be a little bit there when they said moving the swell instead of completely blocking it, we'll be, we'll be fine.
Yeah, I'll make the, the motion to award it. Al, Alcoa.
Alcoa.
Concrete.
Concrete.
Anybody want to second? Any further questions, comments on it? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yeah.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
We good on that now, Mike?
Absolutely. Uh, with the conditions, I'm gonna assume with the conditions as previously stated by me with Mr. Labor's, uh, review as well, uh. And to receive that, that documentation, so, yes.
The tax accessory requests were changed in their record keeping system. This, I'm assuming the new one's cheaper too. That's why he wants to change, right?
Yes, so I had, I had followed up with Jen to get actual numbers. Um, I think currently we're paying like four fifty there. Vitalist proposing to go to like over eight hundred dollars. My only request, um, request to her was for her to confirm with the new company that there wouldn't be like, you know, an eight hundred dollar transfer cost or something.
Right.
So if you guys want to make a motion to approve that, um. The switch can, you know, contingent upon them not charging us at a ridiculous rate to transfer it.
You know, the ones that call around here, did you read them?
Yeah, I read that, yeah.
I'll make that one.
Does anyone make, anybody want a second to the motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
We need some baseball field. We have news to list for immediate actions, right, Lisa?
No, nothing for tonight.
New facility update, Joe? So wait.
I got chance to talk to engineer. He has answered all the questions except for they've not gotten back on the driveway.
Well, Joe, we changed the driveway to what they.
We changed. It's in the review. Had in plenty of time for look at it and not getting anything from the county. This is email and phone calls. Uh, he asked me tonight, or I asked him if he, uh, or if we'd like him to go up on, on behalf of the town and go right through the engineer's office and sit and have a talk with him to find out what's going on.
Well, I, I had a discussion just today with Commissioner, uh, Cisla. She's gonna look into that and everything, so. Uh, give me a day or two here from her and then maybe I'll make a suggestion that our engineer will need with their.
Okay, uh, just leave me know. He'll be waiting. And then, um, uh, I'll, I'll take some police and shit after. Just ask about filling and stuff and so get that, because he, he didn't stop working, but it was still in the.
Right.
So, uh, yeah, so that, that's where we stand. And Danny's last report was, he was gonna work. He was, he was gonna be ready to go out the bid this month. So I'll, I will follow up on him. I haven't heard from him, but that as the last report he gave me, he was gonna be ready. And then we're waiting with the county to review. Because they'll have to, they set it up in red. They'll have to change it if they approve it, that site plan or that dry.
That, anybody have a question? That is good, Joe? Thanks. We have any on fire hydrants? Are we done with that?
That would be for, uh. No, just numbers now.
Anything for the correspondence we need to go over, Lisa?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion and open public comment. Anybody want a second? All favor. Anyone want to jump up to the podium, make any comments, public comments?
I have a couple things that work on the agenda, but I just want, first off, uh, I was looking into your saying about the sewer operation and stuff. And I know when it was brand new, we were only a three man band back at the DPW. But Alpha, Kohat, I don't know if Lo Pat used to be in it and stuff, but dude, would you want me to look into maybe getting somebody to get their wastewater, uh, certificate out of the DPW? Even if it's over handled lines. I know Kohat goes out. I've had them come out to our stormwater, uh, lines. They're looking for blockies. They got cameras and stuff. They got a, a little jetter truck. They handle clogs and stuff in the system. I think we're grown enough and we're, we're providing more services and the DPW might be something to look for, look to do here moving forward.
You have anybody interested in going?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm just on the parts of getting the, the water. It's, they call it water, uh, water permitting. And I only, I know this because my son's in Alpha and they, he's gonna do the, the drinking water. And the other guy is gonna do the sewer part. And they have it operated, so I don't know if they're gonna take over the pump station too with the contractor, but there might be an option there that may be a money savings that we have a guy with a certificate that's here for calls and stuff. But I agree, I, I have fielded calls for sewer backups and gone out and then talked to Chapman on the phone till they got there and stuff, which a lot of them are, it comes down to, it's actually the residence problem. Till it gets to the main, even out in the street there, but they're not allowed to open the street. They go and come for the curb. And, you know, learn, learn to that and just dealing with it. And the system's getting older. We're twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-five years old now, or maybe pushing thirty, uh, the sewer system out there, so.
Why you and Paul and your liaison look into and see what you can come up with and that?
Yeah, see what the licensing is and what the classes serve to get certified, even if, even if we consider taking over and then we can do a maintenance system on the lines and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um, one other thing, and I think we got this last year, this come across my desk. JTP and L offering convenience one, one twenty volt or twenty volt, a hundred and twenty volt convenience outlets on certain telephone poles and stuff. For decorative holiday lighting, so forth, so on. Uh, but of course, there's a cost to the town to put them on. They'll, and they gotta do it. And then they do a three dollar per outlet per month for electric use when they are in use. They said, I thought, I think every year they, they give this to us, but I just wanted to bring that up if ever the thought come to somewhere along the, the streets that they want to put on Christmas decorations, holiday decorations and so forth, so on. Or even like they said, with banners or, and things like that. And then finally, just OEM wise, I just got, uh, Chief Homer, Lisa, and Mike uh, login for the rave system. That's that, uh, public announcing reverse nine oh one that where for our municipality, us three can send out messages to the community. You know, if it's a serious evacuation, so forth, something, something other detrimental to, um, to the residents and we can down, shorten it to a development or to the whole town. Or we can use it for some important dates or important events happening to get out. One thing is that they have access to all unlisted and listed hard lines that they can send, which is becoming a thing of the past. People with cell phones, if you want to be on this, you have to register your cell phone to receive these messages. That, that was like, uh, the county sent out one for all the smoke, because every fire company in the county got blasted out with the smoke from Canada and everything. Four or five calls, because once they receive a nine oh one call, they have to dispatch the entities for, for the call. So that would help even us if there was an incident that there was controlled fire and the smoke and situation. That's it. Thank you.
Please don't believe in public. I make a motion, I'll close public comment.
Uh, excuse me, are we at number eleven on the, uh, agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
You gotta go with the podium? Say your name, address and.
Hi, my name's, uh, Tom Hallford and I represent Shamishan Car washes on West Avenue. Um, I don't really have anything formal for the committee. I just really wanted to introduce myself. Uh, we have the, um, the properties that are for sale on West Avenue under contract currently. And, uh, we've recently posted escrow, um, with the town and, uh, we're currently doing our due diligence and exploring our options for the sites. Um, so, you know, right now we're pretty flexible with what we would put in that area, so, uh, you know. We probably see my professionals more so than, than myself, uh, in the near future. And, uh, I just wanted to introduce myself.
Thanks, all right. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to close public comments, all favor. We're going to executive session. Mike, what are one of our issues tonight?
Uh, one is the potential east baseball softball field, which would be contractual and then it would fire hydrants, uh, which would also be contractual.
Other than that, I'll make a motion to go to executive session. All favor? You're welcome to stare at a wait. Where you can leave. I make a motion, we come out of executive session. Anybody want a second?
Second.
All favor? Bill, you have a motion?
Yeah, I wanna make a motion to authorize the attorney to draft the lease agreement with the school district, uh, twenty year lease agreement. Uh, to lease the property in front of the school, uh, the open field with the exception of the area that's already being occupied by a playground, the school's. Playground. Equipment. Anybody want a second?
Any further questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we authorize the township attorney to take action as discussed in executive session regarding the address discussed. Question, comment, or call?
Uh, Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
I'll make a motion that we waive the fee for the, uh, Girl Scouts to use Thomas Door Park Pavilion for one hour. That's July fifteenth also, or?
Uh, July twenty-first.
July twenty-first and waive the fee for Fire Department to use Thomas Door Park on July fifteenth. Anybody want a second?
A second.
Any questions, comments, roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, we have a motion. Are you doing, is that missing a motion, Mike?
The one that authorized me to write the letter to Aqua as discussed to exec.
Oh, okay. Uh, I make a motion, we authorize the township attorney to write a letter to Aqua uh, regarding fire hydrants as discussed in executive session. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
And Mr. McDermott. And then one more for the invoice to be sent.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the township clerk to send an invoice regarding property maintenance on the property, uh, as discussed in executive session. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Yes, good for it.
So anyone have any other business or anything you want to discuss? You're all done. Looking for a motion for the adjourned.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.